I will now call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to make to adopt the final agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Commissioner Coon made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Evansky seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. Our next order of business is to adopt the minutes of the April 6, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwarting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. We have two discussion and action items on our agenda for tonight. The first is item 3.1, Vacation of Park Designation on a Portion of South Lake Virginia Shores Park and a Minor Subdivision Reassembly of 6735 and 6745 Smithtown Road. This item does include a public hearing. As we are back conducting our public meeting in council chambers, tonight's public hearing was noticed as in-person. However, anyone wishing to provide testimony remotely during the meeting have the opportunity to coordinate with city staff in advance and to be able to do so. Before opening the public hearing, I will now turn it over to Community and Economic Development Director Marty Dole for staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Yes, as you mentioned, we do have before us this evening an item that has a few potential action items, including a repeal of an ordinance or recommending repeal of an ordinance, vacation of park designation, as well as a minor subdivision and reassembly of two city-owned parcels. This item is a little unique in that the city is the applicant, but we want to make sure that we are going through the process that we would do with any other potential subdivision. So just a little bit of background on this item. Last year, May 11, the council had requested that staff explore selling four vacant city-owned lots. At that time, staff began some research and some public outreach related to those lots. One of those lots, the lot before you, 6735 Smithtown Road, is adjacent to the South Lake Virginia Shores Park and would require a minor subdivision and reassembly of a portion of that park in order to make a residential lot. So because the parks were going to be impacted, that item was also brought to the Parks and Recreation Committee on May 18 of last year. And after their discussion, they did also recommend the sale of that portion of the park with a recommendation to have any proceeds for the resulting lot go to the park fund. So that information was all brought back to the council last June, and at that point in time, council did direct staff to continue working on selling three of those four lots. 6730 Maple Drive and 8090 Trillium Trail were both sold earlier this year. And the item before you this evening is related to 6735 Smithtown Road. On August 3, the council approved a brokerage services agreement with Synergy Land Company. So they are the group that is assisting the city in the sales of these properties. So that's a little bit of background as to why we're looking at this item this evening. So as I noted, the 6735 Smithtown lot, which you can see on your screen highlighted in blue, would require a minor subdivision and reassembly with a portion of the South Lake Virginia Shores Park in order to create a residential lot that meets R1 and Shoreland District standards. There are three actions that the city council would need to take in order for this to happen that we are asking the planning commission to discuss and provide a recommendation on. The first would be repeal of ordinance number 123. This was an ordinance that was adopted on May 29, 1985, designating South Lake Virginia Shores as a neighborhood park playground. In consultation with the city attorney, he noted that parks are not typically established by ordinance, so that in order for this property to be partially subdivided, that ordinance would need to be repealed. And it's, as I mentioned, required to process the minor subdivision. The second piece would be more typical to how park is established in that the city would need to have a, approve a resolution to vacate a portion of this property as park use. So you can see, highlighted in yellow, the area of South Lake Virginia Shores that is proposed for park vacation. The remainder of the park would still be considered a park designation. It would just be this area in yellow proposed to be vacated for that future residential lot. And then third would be the actual minor subdivision and reassembly itself to create this lot. So just a little information on what the final product would be of these actions. So the proposed lot would meet the R1 and Shoreland District standards. You can see on the table, the top table is what the lot would have for bulk regulations, and the bottom table is what those minimum requirements are for a Shoreland lot. So you can see it is, it would meet the lot area width, depth setbacks, as well as impervious As was noted in your background report, the city did contract with WSB to do some of the pre-engineering work on this and some of the other lots we were working on, just to, A, determine feasibility of meeting setbacks and being able to technically be able to get a home on these properties, as well as developing an engineer's estimate to be able to help set the price of that lot, knowing that there is some work that would need to be done with earthwork, retaining walls, utility connections, et cetera, and also providing some draft concept layouts that you can see before you. So again, these are just concept layouts. Ultimately, the lot layout would be up to whoever ended up purchasing this lot to build a home. They would, of course, have to adhere to all of the setback and regulation standards, but these are a couple of concepts that show how that home could potentially fit with either access off of Smithtown Road or access off of Virginia Shore Circle. There is a Met Council sewer easement that runs through the park. You can see that easement highlighted in yellow on the image on your screen, and a portion of that easement would be on this potential future lot as well. The buyer would be responsible to get permission from the Met Council to build a retaining wall if they were to utilize option one with access off of Smithtown Road. This is something the Met Council says they do have a process to allow, but just wanted to make sure it was noted that it would be the buyer's responsibility in the future if they chose to seek access off of Smithtown Road to be able to get to their lot. I also mentioned the engineer's estimates for earthwork, utilities, street work, retaining walls, and tree clearing. These are intended to help set the established sales price. Option one, which is the option with access off of Smithtown Road, would be approximately $58,500. Option two, $47,800. Again, these would be costs that would be borne by the potential future purchaser, not the city. Public feedback, as you noted, Chair, there is a public hearing this evening, but we did seek some additional public hearing back last spring when this item was first brought up and have received some comment as well since the agenda has gone out for this item. So back in May of 2020, property owners within 350 feet were sent a letter directing them to a survey to ask questions related to the city's potential sale of these lots, of the three in question that the city had designated for sale. This specific lot, there were 18 letters that were sent, and the city did receive one response with concerns about giving away designated park land and concerns that that should be retained as park. The city also did receive a phone call based on the agenda packet from the property owner adjacent to the park at 745 Virginia Shore Circle, who also expressed similar sentiment from the May 2020 feedback displeasure that the property will, his property will no longer be adjacent to the park, and questions related to the impact on property value with that change. So based on the direction that staff has received from the city council, staff is recommending that the planning commission hold the public hearing and receive testimony this evening, and that absent any major concerns, that the planning commission recommended the city council the repeal of ordinance number 123, the vacation of South Lake Virginia Shores Park, and approval of the minor subdivision and reassembly for 6735 and 6745 Smithtown Road. With that, Chair, as you noted, there is a public hearing. That concludes my presentation, and I will turn it back to you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Marty. And I will now open to a, to a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this topic? Do we have someone remotely?
I don't believe we have anyone remotely for this item.
We do not, Chair.
Okay, okay. Well, hearing then, I would like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Moore. Is there a second?
A second? Motion?
Thank you, Commissioner Evansky. We will now, we will now, all of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion does, the motion does carry.
And Chair, just for the record, I believe it was Commissioner Coon who made the second motion. Is that correct?
Oh, okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Now I'll open the floor to the Planning Commission to discuss. Is there any, any questions or concerns or comments from the commissioners?
I have a question, just what is the value that's going to come from this? What's going to be the contribution to the park fund?
Yes. Commissioner Schwarting, chair, members of the commission. So the previous two lots that were sold were slightly smaller than this lot, and also obviously not within a Shoreland District and with an area close to the lake as this one. Those were sold for $120,000. Prelimarily, the brokerage services firm that we have talked to has estimated that the city could potentially ask for above $200,000 for this lot. That has not been finalized yet.
In the original plan for the park, was this back area meant to be developed into something and abandoned, or is it just something that was meant to be open land?
Commissioner Murray, I believe that the plan was always for that to just be retained as natural area. That was the question that was asked of the Parks and Recreation Committee last spring was, is there a desire, is this a priority area for programming to do something with this back area of the park? And at that time, it was the recommendation of the Parks and Rec Committee that, no, this was not a priority area. There's a lot of challenging grades in that area to be able to do any sort of programmed activity, which was their rationale for providing the recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, just a quick question, clarification. The $200,000, that's the sale price that's expected?
Correct. That would be the sale price absent the city's brokerage fee for our brokerage, which I believe the, with our retainer, is a 4.7% fee, I believe. But that would be the potential proposed sale price, yes.
Okay, so then, does that price then estimate the fact that, or the, not the fact, the estimates of, that it would take to excavate and get the site ready? So absent that, we think that this is a $260,000 parcel?
That is, that is considering the engineer's estimates, and I think that with the previous lots also, we've, we've attempted to place them on the market on the high end, knowing that we can always reduce, so $200,000. And again, this is all a little preliminary because we haven't sat down and figured out exactly what the market value is, but let's just say $200,000 is the starting sale, sale list price. Lack of interest, you know, just like any real estate transaction, could potentially see that be reduced.
Does the park get a lot of use?
I believe the park itself gets a lot of use, yes.
Is there a homeowners association associated with Virginia Shores?
That's a good question. Do you know?
Mr. Peterson, members of the commission, I don't believe, so I was recently speaking with a resident that way, and I think they indicated that there is not, so. Okay. I was just considering if there was, and if there was a difference based on Virginia Shores versus Smithtown Road, that's something that the buyer would probably want to know, and if there's any constraints based on what they can build, what they can do, what they can't do. That was really my only concern. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or concerns?
Question I have, you're listing this as two separate addresses?
Right now, it is two separate addresses prior to the minor subdivision and reassembly, so we are referring to two separate parcels. 6735 is the small square parcel here that technically is not park property, and then 6745 is the park property. So that's why it's noted as two addresses. It's two properties that would be subdivided and then reassembled into a new residential lot with the remainder being retained as the park property.
Okay. Marty, just a quick question. How much have we spent so far to this point, on the engineering, the legal work to get to the resolutions and vacate that?
Sure. Commissioner Evansky, chair, members of the commission, the council had authorized up to $20,000 for all three lots, so, and we have not exceeded that amount yet, but that was the authorization we were given to prepare the engineering and work on the things that were needed on the front end to sell all three lots. I don't have the specific numbers of how it broke down between each.
And then when we recombine this with vacating the existing park land and recreating a lot, how well are we positioned then to, if we have to hold this real estate for a long period of time, what's the city's position on it?
I don't think that there is a concern of holding it too long. I think that, at least in previous discussions with the city council, that they are, they're motivated to sell, which is why we would potentially consider a reduction in sales price to be able to see those lots moved. So I believe that there would be an annual property tax payment, but I would not anticipate this being held by the city for very long term.
Question about site work on the existing park. Will any site work need to be revised to ensure that there's no water, sitting water, or any kind of concerns with pervious area, non-pervious area?
Yeah, Commissioner Moore, members of the commission, there should not be any impacts to the park. The way, if you're familiar at all with that property, the way the grades work is they actually slope down fairly dramatically down to where this new residential lot would be created, which is what results in the somewhat high engineer's estimate for dirt work and retaining walls. So the, the park should not be impacted by any of that water. The builder will need to grade and develop in a way that makes sure that the stormwater is routed to the proper areas on their lot, but there shouldn't be any impacts to the park related to water.
I think the uniqueness of this discussion, quite frankly, is that, is that the, there's no property that can be transacted without following the proper procedures. And it's, you know, it's basically all, you know, parameters have to be, have to be in line before anything can, can, can be transacted. So that's the good news. This was previously debated amongst the Planning Commission and through the, through the city council some time ago, and so it's, it's now a formality as to, as to if we want, if we want to make a motion. Is there, is there a motion to recommendation? I would, I would make the motion.
I'd make a motion to repeal the ordinance number 123, designate an outlet A of South Lake Virginia Shores as a neighborhood park slash playground, and to approve the resolution vacating the portion of South Lake Virginia Shores as depicted from park designation, and to approve the minor subdivision and reassembly as depicted for city-owned property at 6735 and 6745 Smithtown Road.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Coon. Is there a second to the motion?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwarting. All of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you very much. The, the motion does carry. Our next item on the agenda is item 3.2, Sketch Plan Review, Meadows at Victoria Proposed by Golden Valley Land Company. While this item does not include a formal public hearing, neighbors within 350 feet of the subject property have been invited to provide comment and ask questions for tonight's meeting. First, I would like to turn it over to Community Development Director Marty Dole for staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, before you this evening is the sketch plat for the Meadows at Victoria proposed development, also being referred to as Rolling Hills South by Golden Valley Land Company, so we will be reviewing that this evening. Just as a reminder, although you probably don't need a reminder with as many of these as we've seen recently, that the sketch plat process is really just a feedback mechanism. There's no approvals or official action to be taken during this meeting. It's to provide that guidance and assist the applicant in any subsequent preliminary plat application. And as you mentioned, Chair Iverson, property owners within 350 feet of this property were notified and invited to participate in tonight's meeting. So some background on the property, the location, this is a portion of 100580 Victoria Drive. It is west of Victoria Drive and south of the proposed Rolling Hills development. So as you can see on the map here, the Rolling Hills development, which just became, came before you a few weeks back for preliminary plat, is just to the north. This is the subject site here. I note that it is a portion of this property because at this point in time, the farmstead that is owned by the property owner is not proposed to be part of this development. The area is approximately 71.23 acres, with approximately 48 of those being developable, and like the Rolling Hills development, it would require annexation in order to be approved for development. The existing conditions, it is currently primarily agriculture with some agricultural with a mixture of rolling hills, some wooded areas, wetlands, as well as the Chaska Creek that runs through the property. As was noted in your background report, and is typical for all developments where there are tree stands, a tree survey and analysis will be required as part of the preliminary plat, and that this property will need to, or this development would need to adhere to the rules of the Carver County Watershed Management Organization, which is part of that watershed. The area is guided by the city's comprehensive plan for low-density residential, medium-density residential, as well as institutional. The developer is proposing a low-density residential area of approximately 31 acres, which would result in 3.14 units per acre, a medium-density residential area of approximately 15 acres, which would result in seven units per acre, and the institutional uses proposed would be Park-Wetland-Creek. So staff believes that the comp plan is being satisfied with the current proposal. Here is a rendering of the proposed development. It was included in your background packet. I'll keep this up for a few seconds, and as always, we can come back to this when we get to discussion. So moving on to zoning and lot regulations, this development is proposing single-family homes, villa units, as well as townhomes. As you can see on the table above, the lot area, lot width, lot depth, side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, et cetera, that are being proposed. We're looking for the single-family homes, a minimum lot area of 84, 150 square feet, 65 feet in width, 130 feet in depth, seven and a half foot side yard setbacks, 25 front and rear with a 50% maximum impervious surface. The villa lots are a little bit smaller, 7,000 square feet, 56 feet, 125 in depth, seven and a half, again, side, 25 front and rear with 60% impervious. And then the townhome units that are being proposed are 25 feet wide each per unit, 45 feet in depth, with 20 feet of building separation, and 20-foot front and rear setbacks. As a comparison, I have listed below some of the recently approved developments that are similar lot styles. So you can see the heritage homes from the Rolling Hills, as well as the Revere villa lots from the Rolling Hills development that received preliminary plat approval, as well as some recent townhome products that were proposed by, approved, excuse me, from the Laketown 15th Edition. So you can kind of see how those compare to some of those previously approved developments. As was noted in your background packet, staff has noted that the development parcel is only accessible by one roadway in from the north, and that providing a secondary access just based on the conditions there with the railroad tracks and the road is going to pose a challenge. So we are intending to have further discussions with the applicant as to how we can satisfy the public safety personnel and make sure that the development is safe and accessible. Buffers and screening, so as you've probably seen, this property is adjacent to the railroad tracks. This is the Twin Cities and Western Railroad, I believe. The applicant is proposing a berm and plantings along the railroad tracks with their proposed development that they have stated would screen up to the first floor of approximately lots 16 through 27 that would be, have their rear yards directly adjacent to the, not adjacent, but directly facing the railroad tracks. There is also a few double-fronted and one triple-fronted townhome lot in the current proposal, this lot one. So staff is recommending, as related to berms, buffers and screening, that a, the double-fronted townhome unit and the triple-fronted unit adhere to the 25-foot for double-fronted and 15-foot for the side of triple-fronted buffer and planting requirements. A couple of additional staff notes related to buffer and screening, there is some concern with the layout that results in several of the lots with rear yards facing railroad tracks. As was included in your background packet, the applicant has some comments as to why they are choosing that layout, and I'm sure we'll be able to speak to that this evening, but they spoke to the fact that there is currently minimal and slower traffic on the tracks, that there is a buyer desire would rather abut the tracks than be abutting another lot, that the minimum distance to the building line from the center line of the tracks is 145 feet, when other developments along these same railroad tracks are in the 100-foot range, that the buffer berm and trail will provide adequate screening, and that less impervious surface and grading would be required for this layout. Park, so currently, the applicant is proposing six-point, excuse me, the development itself requires 6.11 acres of requires 6.11 acres of parkland dedication, as is currently proposed. The applicant is proposing a 2.5-acre park, which would include a tot lot, and this would also include five street parking spaces along the curve of the road in this area right here. They are also proposing an additional 1.63 acres of trail corridor, which you can see highlighted in red in these areas for park credit, and then are proposing the remainder in parkland dedication fee. So just some staff notes on the park requirement. The comprehensive plan does note a neighborhood park that is to serve the area that is currently the proposed Rolling Hills and this Meadows at Victoria development. As you know, there was a 5.5-acre neighborhood park that received preliminary plat approval in the Rolling Hills development that is, I believe, less than a mile away from this development, or from this area where this park is proposed. The Parks and Recreation Committee did meet last evening. The committee recommended that an additional four-to-five-acre park with internal parking and street access be provided in this area. They also recommended that the wooded parcel showing up in the north corner of this be either retained as a HOA lot versus being dedicated to the city, incorporated into adjacent lots, or incorporated into a larger park in that area. Related to parks, the trail and sidewalks, there is a required trail, which is depicted on one side of the collector roadway. As always, those trails are required to be eight-foot by two minutes, and this is what the applicant is proposing. And then similar to the Rolling Hills development, staff is recommending that the applicant provide financial contribution as part of the proposed 2022 Highway 11 roadway project that would cover their portion of the trail, as opposed to constructing the trail now as we would typically require, just due to that project coming up very soon, or likely coming up very soon. The project is depicting six-foot wide sidewalks in the single-family home area and one side of all public streets, which is a city requirement. There is currently proposed five-foot wide sidewalks in the townhome area. Moving on to transportation and right-of-way. So staff is supportive of the collector roadway that is being shown, highlighted in red in this area that would extend through the parcel with no driveway access. This is proposed at a 70-foot right-of-way and would be an extension of the collector roadway that is coming from the north in the Rolling Hills parcel. Staff is also supportive of the 60-foot right-of-way in the single-family area as proposed and highlighted in the lighter red here. The applicant is proposing currently a 40-foot public right-of-way for the townhome roads. So originally, the applicant had proposed private roadways, and on recommendation from staff to try to avoid private roadways, they have revised their sketch to include a 40-foot public right-of-way, and that is what you're seeing before you. So just a few notes related to that. Staff does still have some concerns with that reduced right-of-way related to snow removal and maintenance. And just overall, I think there should be some discussion, both at this level and at the city council level, as to whether or not these roads should ultimately be a public or private. There are pros and cons to each of those, which we can talk about. And if it is determined that this should be a public roadway system, or that at least portions of this, staff would be recommending a reconfigured layout to provide a wider public right-of-way in that area. Moving on to site utilities and stormwater, the well location that we mentioned during the Rolling Hills process is shown on this sketch plat to serve this development and the development to the north. As you can see on the image on your screen, it is just to the south of the proposed city lift station, which is part of the Rolling Hills development to the north. And then, as I mentioned earlier, this is in the jurisdiction of the Carver County WMO, so all stormwater management and erosion control would be subject to their rules. So staff does have a few recommendations and some things for further discussion. So as indicated, staff is recommending that the applicant submit their petition for annexation concurrently, excuse me, with their preliminary plat application, just to, excuse me. That means I'm talking too much. Just to make sure that the timing aligns with that annexation process, that the applicant continue to have discussions with the city about the single access and ensure satisfaction of public safety personnel, that as part of the preliminary plat application, that a cross-section rendering be shown for the berm and railroad track area that shows the distances, elevations, et cetera, plantings, to be able to better visualize how that berm will look and feel and screen the homes from the tracks, adhering to the city's requirements for buffers and screening for double and triple-fronted lots, as well as for the proposed railroad berm, incorporating feedback from the Parks and Rec Committee and Planning Commission as it relates to proposed parks and trails, continuing discussions with staff related to the townhome area roadway, finalize the utility plans and stormwater plans, and then, as well as is typical with any preliminary plat application, provide the architectural plans for homes, wetland delineation reports, maintenance access for stormwater ponds, tree survey, and et cetera for preliminary plat. And with that, Chair Iverson, that concludes my presentation. And as you mentioned, we did invite property owners within 350 feet to attend the meeting this evening. I believe we may have a couple in the room. And then Alyssa does have a representative from Twin Cities and Western Railroad who is joining us virtually, who may wish to speak.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much, Director Dole. Is there, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the topic? And just give us your, your name and address, if you would please. Is there going once? Going twice? Okay. We do have someone online.
Mr. Wagner, if you would like to address the commission, you can unmute yourself at this time. There should be a microphone button on the bottom of the screen. If you prefer not to address the commission, you can just leave yourself muted.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you so much for allowing us to present at this planning commission meeting. My name is Mark Wagner. I'm president and CEO of the Twin Cities and Western Railroad. We're headquartered out in Glencoe, Minnesota, 2525, 2925, 12th Street East, Glencoe, Minnesota, 55336. So I have had a, we've had the opportunity to review this development proposal, and there's a few elements that we would like to introduce as part of the discussion. The applicant notes on page 17 or 19 of their Q and A, it says, the answer, the railroad track in question only sees three trains per day at 30 miles per hour. This is very minimal impact, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Actually, we do have more than three trains a day. We have what we would call our scheduled train, which is one eastbound and one westbound, normally occurring in the early to mid-evening westbound, and then early, very early in the morning, eastbound. But then we also have a lot of unscheduled trains. Our railroad is primarily 95% agricultural, and so we live and die by the agricultural marketplace. So as we speak, I would say in the last three weeks, we've probably averaged six trains a day because of the demand for Minnesota corn and soybeans. So just bear that in mind. And then they reference some comparable developments to the east, and that's very true. We are, there's a couple of them in Chaska that we're familiar with. One of them, as part of the development, required a whistle-free crossing at Clover Ridge Road. And that, that was incorporated as part of the development, and so the development paid for a whistle-free crossing. As opposed to a little further east at Bavaria Road, the development did not require a whistle-free crossing. And guess what? We have a bunch of residents over at, by Bavaria Road that are very interested in creating a whistle-free crossing. However, they're very expensive, depending on the road, can be up to $500,000. And so I'm not sure how the city of Chaska is gonna, you know, work through that. Obviously, I don't think they have that kind of money sitting around, nor do the residents really want to be assessed. But it is, it is an issue. And so what we have here is we have a proposal for 208 residential units who will definitely notice the train horns blowing as we go across County Road 11. And I would encourage a discussion with the developer and with Carver County as far as the 2022 references to the County Road 11 project, whether a whistle-free crossing has been contemplated as part of that improvement, and if so, how is it going to get funded? And I just say this to be proactive as opposed to reactive, because we love the city of Victoria. We welcome the, by annexation, you will now be our direct neighbor, but we want to be a good neighbor and do everything we can to prevent future complaints. Secondly, we would be very interested in working with the developer on their berm design, because we have a couple of concerns. The railroad needs to be adequately drained. You know, we run on wood ties that sit in rock, and anytime you have drainage and erosion, that could somehow damage the subgrade as a result of runoff or whatever, that, that causes us concern. And so we're interested in this berm design, how far the trees will be away from the railroad, because we do have storms in Minnesota, and sometimes those trees fall on the railroad tracks. And again, in the spirit of announcement, prevention's worth upon a cure, it would just be helpful to be able to have them supply their drawings so that we can supply them to our engineer, and then in turn, supply comments back. And that was, were kind of the things I wanted to bring up. And again, we try to be a good neighbor, and so, and we appreciate the notice as an adjacent property owner, and I'll take any questions you all may have.
Is there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. In a prior meeting, on another subdivision, we had significant discussion on an electric fence to keep the cows in, and what a safety issue it was for residents, you know, kids in the proposed neighborhood. What are your thoughts on safety relative to a berm and railroad tracks?
You bring up a very good point. Trespassing on railroad tracks is a very significant problem, not only in Minnesota, but nationwide. I mean, you see these graduation pictures of kids standing on railroad tracks. Well, unfortunately, in any given year, there's over 500 fatalities of people walking along railroad tracks, getting hit by trains. Some intentionally, unfortunately, that, that's how they want to end their life, but others, quite unfortunately, they walk along with their headphones on, and they don't hear the train, despite the train blowing, you know, that kind of thing. Trains can't stop on a dime. So yes, it would be very interesting to see what the developer, how the developer would address that issue to ameliorate people going from the development to go out and walk on the railroad tracks, because we definitely don't want that, and it definitely is a problem.
The past 20 years, how many accidents have you had on your section of track, whether it's a human, or a car, or other animal?
Boy, the last 20 years, I would, I would probably say we might average two a year, and, and they, they vary in severity. I could tell you 1995 was our worst year. We had a couple of very bad ones that resulted in fatalities. You know, fortunately, we haven't had, we had, our last fatal incident occurred in, I believe it was 2017, in western Minnesota. But yes, it's, it's just, it's very, very tragic, because the crew on, that's on the train can't stop the train. You know, they'll put the train into emergency brakes, but the steel on steel, I mean, it'll slide, you know, three quarters of a mile before it'll come to a stop. And so, but as far as pedestrian, we haven't had any pedestrian injuries in, I would say, probably, well, we did, there was one in St. Paul. There was a fatality there, and we, we're still trying to get to the bottom of why that was. But it's just very sporadic, I guess.
How many miles of track are you responsible for?
So we maintain, own and maintain 144 miles. We operate on another 150 miles of other people's tracks.
Okay. Thank you.
You, you bring up the whistle-free crossing. You know, obviously, it's mandated that, that there has to be a train whistle for the, for the, for the crossing. And I think that's, I think that's a major issue that will have to be resolved, or that will have to be figured out at the, at the same time. And you had, you had mentioned that a, what's, essentially, what is, what constitutes a $500,000 whistle-free crossing?
So it depends on the roadway. So if County Road 11 is, is, it's currently one lane each way, correct?
Correct.
And I don't know if the improvement is going to take it to two lanes each way or not. But let's assume for—
It will.
It will. Okay. So that, yes. So you need to have a concrete barrier between the northbound and the southbound at, for X number of feet on either side of the railroad crossing, so that cars can't go around gates. And then you have to have four quadrant gates, as opposed to a gate here and a gate here on the other side. You know, those are kind of the primary components. I'm not an expert on the detail of that, but that's kind of the general design parameters. And I believe Minnesota Department of Transportation ultimately has final say over what a whistle-free design passes muster for. The reason for that is for federal liability concerns. They, they charge the, the state DOTs to have oversight on the design of a whistle-free crossing.
I'd like to ask, how many cars are in any given train?
Boy, that varies a lot. It, in slow times, it can be fewer, seven. In these unplanned unit trains that we're running of corn and soybeans, they are running somewhere between 113 and 115 cars per train. And so, and then we do run ethanol, and ethanol is generally either 80 cars or 96 cars, depending on where it's going.
Which, which in terms of lengths would constitute what portion of a mile? For, for example, ethanol, tankers?
I would say the 90, somewhere between the 80 and the 96 would be about a mile long. I kind of use a ballpark of, if each rail car is 65 feet long, you know, 100 cars is, that, that doesn't sound quite right, though, but, because cars have different lengths, too. I would have to give you a better answer for that one. I can't give you that one off the top of my head. But it's not rare for a train to be over a mile long.
Yeah.
But not by much.
Yeah. Well, I'm very familiar with, with both ethanol and, and grain, grain cars, and a mile is, is not unusual. At, at least, it certainly appears as though a mile. So I think that's, I think that's a pretty accurate description.
You said that 95% of your product is agricultural. The five remaining percent, are any of those products hazardous waste or hazardous chemicals?
No, I would say the closest thing to, to what you're asking for. I mean, back in the 90s, we would haul ammonia for agricultural uses, but we haven't hauled ammonia in at least 15 years. And— And we really don't want to haul ammonia if we can avoid it. The trouble with railroads is we're under the federal government's common carrier obligation. So anybody can come to us and say, we need you to, to haul this. We can't turn them down. But in our case, the closest thing we come to hazardous is we do have a propane distribution center in western Minnesota, so we'll bring propane out to it. But we have all kinds of safety protocols in place. For instance, on our ethanol cars and our, when, when we have propane car in the train, we'll limit that train to 25 mile an hour as opposed to the 30. So we do, and we do take very seriously our safety protocols.
Mr. Wagner, currently, the proposed development has the park backed up to the railroad track. How much of a concern is that for you?
It all depends on how it's designed. I mean, you don't want to have, you don't want to create an attractive nuisance. And so just the design that I've seen is, I think it's the same one you've seen, where that was shown on the screen earlier of just the overall plot, the devil's in the details.
It would seem if the open space is down nearer to the railroad tracks and children are playing soccer in that field, you have a pretty big hazard of a ball going onto the tracks and the kids running after it.
Right, so I would propose that the developer put up a high chain link fence.
Or relocate the park to a better location.
Yeah.
Especially with the tot lot. I think there's some risk there.
Mr. Wagner, do we furnish you a location map with the materials?
The, the aerial?
Yes.
I, I got this off of the, I looked at the planning commission notes before attending tonight's meeting and that's how I found that reference to page 19 and that larger thing. But I don't have, I don't have a blown up map of the development, so I don't exactly know where this park is proposed to be.
I, I mean, my, I'm, I'm curious as to in the, what did Chaska do with the subdivision that is on the south side of the railroad tracks in the, in what will be northeast of this planned development? If you have any insight as to was there fencing that was put along the, the backs of those lots? Was there bermed? Are they treed?
So disclosure, the person that normally would have attended these meetings retired at the end of April.
God bless.
At the end of March. And so I'm kind of batting a pinch hitter here.
Sure.
So I don't know exactly, but I would, I would say we have a relationship with Matt Paderoski of the city of Chaska. And so I'm sure he could answer that question if you want to reach out to him.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Wagner?
My only question would be, and I don't know if it's between the railroad and the developer, but you know, what would, like a, I'm trying to get words, like a big wall like they build along the freeways to go between the development and the railroad tracks? You know, cut down noise hopefully and keep people from going into that instead of the berm and the trees or instead of a berm, put a big fence up there.
So one of the things that we have to consider, and I'd have to ask an engineer on that. Well, first of all, you know, we wouldn't pay for it because it's not helping our business any. But probably our concern would be, and I'd, again, I'd have to ask an engineer, but in the winter time, when you get, you know, those snowstorms, you get a lot of drifting. And would the presence of a sound barrier like that impact snow accumulating along the, along and on the track where today it doesn't because it's open, open area? It's more complicated than just a set of rails going through. There's a lot of things to consider.
And of course, you're building this for the next 50 years and who knows what train traffic's going to do or what the rail's going to do or even if it gets converted to light rail at some point or high speed rail. And it's easier to.
That's very true. When I started in 1991 on Carver County's comp plan, we were a bike trail in 2020.
That was, that was one of the concerns that I had. I, I anticipated that bulk of your traffic was, was egg product. And, and certainly, the, the volume of egg product that's, that's on the rails is, is just literally doubled in the last 20 years. And so if you look at another 20 years down the road, you know, what, what was, you know, a maximum of six trains a day could, you know, theoretically be 12 at the same time. And I, I think it's, you know, I would view this as just full disclosure so that we have, so we have the information to, to pursue the things that we have to.
That's very true. And I will say that in 2012, we had our first two unit grain facilities open, one in Brownton and one in Buffalo Lake. And since that time, we've had three more open up, one in Danube, one in Montevideo, and one in Appleton. So that, to your point, yield curves keep going up and so, yes, there will be more product to move.
Yeah, that is, that is very well, very well defined. The only thing that, that may slow down at some point is ethanol, but you know, certainly volume of, of corn and beans will, will continue. Any other, any other questions for Mr. Wagner?
Just one. This, I, I imagine that you've, you're, you have some degree of experience with neighborhoods being put next to railroad tracks. Are you familiar with any standardized disclosures that would be prepared and given to potential home purchasers to have them acknowledge that these kind of hazards exist behind the, the homes that they're about to purchase?
Oh, I wish there was. I, I can tell you, I've got more calls from people who say, well, the realtor said that, that there was only two trains a day that went by here and they went by at noon. It's like, well, why didn't you call us?
Mr. Wagner, just a quick question on the maintenance of the railroad. What's involved with maintaining the railroad during, behind this development and how often is it done?
So the railroad is inspected at least once a week. And so any kind of, they call them defects. So if you have a loose bolt or, you know, a tie that's, the rock start to flow away from you, back the rock back in. But we do an annual maintenance where we go look at the entire 144 miles and determine areas where the ties, you, you may have some ties that need to be replaced. We replace approximately 21,000 ties a year, but it's not to say that we're doing it over the entire 144 miles. But I would say you could, you could safely say, because the east end of our railroad is, has the most density, that it, it wouldn't be unusual for, to see ties being replaced in this area at least once every five years. And then with, when, anytime you replace ties, then you got to lay down more ballast and then you have machines that come through that level the track out to make it nice and straight. And so it's, it's noisy. Our people that do that are very, very skilled. We have a great team, but the neighborhood, they'll definitely notice we're out there.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions for Mr. Wagner with the opportunity to speak to him?
I have one last question. Mr. Wagner, I'm sure this isn't the first time you've had a development going up next to your tracks. What are we missing? I mean, what would you like to see? What would you like to see for distances from houses, backyards and things of that nature? I'm pretty sure you're going to say you don't want to see a park next to the railroad tracks, but what else, what are we missing?
Well, that's a very good question and I don't have an exact answer for you. I mean, we know that development is inevitable. I would say in the grand scheme of things, the Twin Cities, the Southwest Metro has been relatively slower at developing than the rest of the metro area, but guess what? It's here now. And so we're really kind of getting into this, this thing. I mean, I can tell you that there was some development that occurred in the 90s in Chanhassen that the impervious surfaces created more water drainage onto the railroad to the tune of eroding underneath the track. But I don't have any exact standards. Generally speaking, you know, we, we have 50 feet of right of way on either side of the center track. That's what we own. And any kind of obstruction to prevent people from going from adjacent property onto the railroad track would be welcomed. What's really unfortunate is there's a state law that requires the railroad to put a fence in and everybody misinterprets what that law means. The law was created in the 1880s so that if a farmer was adjacent to a railroad track and they had livestock, the railroad was obligated to put a fence along its railroad so the live, and the farmer would put in the other three corners. And that has been so abused over the years that I hesitate to offer a more concrete answer than I just did.
I just didn't want to miss the opportunity with someone with your experience, so thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a very good question and I will see if I can get a more standard answer for you.
Wonderful.
Anything else? Do you have anything already that you'd like to?
I don't have anything additional at this point, Chair Iverson. It may be, we may want to ask the, the developers if they would like to come up and speak and talk to their development as well.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, my name is Matt Pavick with Golden Valley Land Company. Thank you for taking the time tonight to look at our project. We've been working on this for a couple of years now throughout kind of the early planning phases and the comp plan changing and sewer and water being brought down to this area. So we're excited that we're finally at the point now where we can really present a real project. I'm not really sure exactly where to start. I guess maybe start with staff's report, which we largely agree with and appreciate their review of our project. We are here tonight again to get feedback from you on your thoughts on our zoning and setbacks and land use and, and park ideas and all those things tonight. Also to talk about the railroad track. We've thought about that a lot, obviously, working with builders. We've got a lot of feedback from them on their concerns with, with, you know, being adjacent to a train track. And at the end of all those discussions, the, the biggest comparison that we could make was from the view of a homeowner, would you rather live on a train track or a busy street? You know, having that back up to your backyard. And so, you know, just looking at it from kind of that market perspective and people's perceptions of what it is. And the overwhelming answer from the builders was they'd rather be on a train track with more privacy and space and the train comes by, we thought it was three times a day. That's what it says on their website, on the county website. So we're, you know, we weren't trying to mislead by any means. We appreciate the added information. But just with that irregularity and infrequency of a train and it's, you know, not a high speed train, which I think was correct. So the idea was that that was a more desirable layout. So we thought as we did it, we wanted to make sure that we were designing the lots the best way that we could to still screen from the train track or minimize the impact. So we looked at all the other neighboring adjacent projects that have single family lots that back up to the train tracks. And almost every one of them was about 100 feet away from the train center of track to the backs of the houses. So our project, we pushed that further. So we're at 145 minimum and it averages about 160. That's just straight distance. Then we put in a berm from the edge of the train right of way. So we did not impact any of the drainage on the train track. The train has a good ditch along either side of its right of way that we do not touch. We start at that point, come up for the berm. We've got about a 20 foot high berm from the train track point of view. So the trains themselves are 20 feet below the top of the berm. So there's, the, the actual train cars themselves would be completely screened behind 20 feet of berm. Then on top of that, you have trees. And then our, the way that our topography works out on the project is the, the homes are, you know, it goes uphill from the track. So the homes are walkouts and then, so it's kind of looking down. But the top of the berm is at about the same elevation as the first floor of the house. So we think it's really, you know, as good of a design as it can be to be a distance from the track, have a screening, not impact any drainage and be as natural of a berm, you know, to absorb sound and other things too that we could do there. So we do like, we like that design and we prefer that design to other options that we looked at, which were, you know, put a streak down by there so we would move houses further away, but that doesn't provide any kind of berming or screening. It provides a little bit of distance, but not much, doesn't provide any more than we have. Or walls, like sound walls, which are kind of a double edged sword. Number one, they're very expensive. Number two, they actually refract sound in other directions. So you may have an unintended consequence of a train sound bouncing and going somewhere else. You have to maintain it over time, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, that, that's kind of how we came to the, to the design of the, of the train track relationship. A couple of things I wanted to ask, and I was taking some notes when, when they were talking here, is I believe there was discussion of a bridge that was going to be part of this County Road 11 project. And I don't know, we're not in the loop enough to know if that was going to be happening soon or if that was going to be part of it. So I wanted to pose that as part of the discussion if we're going to talk about kind of whistle free crossings and that sort of a thing too. But I think the bridge may be, you know, deem all that kind of moot. So I wanted to talk about, see if we know any information about that to kind of inform the discussion.
Chair, members of the commission, there is some research being done of a potential future overpass or underpass for the train tracks that would not be part of the 2021, 2022 upgrade project in most likely. But there is research being done for potential future either over or underpass.
So I guess that's, that's kind of the main point. It's just the zoning information, the train track. Parkland dedication, we went to the park meeting last night and we appreciated all their feedback. The way we were kind of looking at this project is under the, kind of looking through the comp plan and the way that that is laying out park spacing and sizing within a certain radius. And so we were following that and we kind of thought we had met that with this, you know, the, there's a 5.5 acre park in the project just contiguous to us to the north. And the park is on the south end of that project, so it's essentially a park that residents from our project would use. And then to, from that park to the far point of our western boundary is a half a mile. So if we were going to put another neighborhood park in of a full five acres, you'd have two five acre parks within a quarter mile of each other. And so we didn't really think that that was necessarily what was going on, but we got the feedback last night that the park commission did prefer more acreage than what we were showing. So we're showing 2.5 acres of active park. Plus the 5.5 brings you to about eight acres of active parkland. Plus, the 5.5 brings you to about eight acres of active parkland that could be used in this half-mile radius. So, we kind of, that was our thought process. So, we're again open and looking forward to feedback on that from this body as well as City Council.
And the 2.5 in the townhome area?
The 2.5 acres is just to, we're in the blue there, is where we're showing 2.5 acres. So, there's an area of flat ground and a tot lot with some street parking. Again, our idea there was this is a little bit more of a complimentary park to the big park. You know, it's a spot for, maybe it's a little-kid park versus the big-kid park kind of a thing, but still having some space to do that. And again, we presented this information to them last night, and they disagreed and thought that more land was needed. So, we heard that, but again, we'd like to continue the conversation. We'll want to work with staff on it, figure out what the best design is for park here. So, I think that is all that I had. Unless anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions or concerns for Mr. Pavick?
I just have a couple of questions, if good. The development that's going to the north of you, we reviewed that plot, this will be weeks ago. There is a disclosure that's going to be part of that development. We were served legal notice from the attorneys for the gun club that lives to the west of this. Have you taken that into consideration, that we probably need to make a disclosure to inform people that there's going to be firearms going off, and dogs don't like that, and things like that?
Sure. Yeah, we're happy to do that. We'd prefer to disclose things like that. So, I'm not sure specifically how it affects our parcel because we're not directly adjacent to them, I think.
Are you not abutted to that in the west edge near?
No, because they're more kitty-corner and more to the north.
Okay, so they're on this ghost plat that's?
They're up there, yeah. So, I don't know, but again, if it affects us, we're happy to disclose whatever.
Well, you will hear a noise.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
I'm up, I live over by the high school, and I can hear gunshots going off at, you know, 6:30 in the morning on weekends. So, if I can hear them up there, you're going to hear them there.
Yes.
And maybe you want to give consideration that if you're going to put such a disclosure together, which is probably prudent, that you would roll into that a discussion about that there are going to be lots that are by a railway. I grew up near railroad tracks. Boys seem to have like some sort of magnet in them that's attracted to the steel. I imagine girls do, too. And, you know, frequently, we could be found hanging out
Sure.
on railway property. So, it's not a question of if it's going to happen, it will. And letting people know that, hey, these might be new things to you. But
Yes.
as everybody's pointed out, I mean, development is taking place next to railroad tracks for almost millennia at this point.
Right. And we want to make sure, you know, again, that we disclose, we're not hiding the track. We want to make sure everybody knows about it. Disclosure is a seller's friend. I mean, it's not something you would ever want to do less of, that you want to do more of. So, yeah, we'll definitely make sure we take note of that and make everybody aware, if it's an official disclosure, whatever it needs to be. It's great to have that stuff up front. And then also the safety concerns, too. You know, you want to make sure that people know, and we're doing whatever we can do for safety there. Again, you know, when you sit back and look at the statistics, you know, it's safer than a busy street, you know, in terms of pedestrians and all those kinds of things. It seems scary, of course it is. But, you know, thousands of people are killed by cars every year, pedestrians. And so, it's something you got to put in perspective, but keep it, you know, also on the forefront of safety and make sure that we do, if there's some kind of chain link fencing or something to help keep people out. That's always a great idea, too. So, we're again, looking for that feedback.
Yeah, and that's primarily, that's primarily where we're at, is this is a preliminary plat. And, you know, I think when, it's a work in progress, is how I would view it. So, here's additional information, here's feedback, you know, here's real-life situations that have to be addressed. And how do we address them, you know? And I guess, you know, I would look at the whistle-free crossing at $500,000. And of course, that's a very large number, but in the scheme of the whole thing, that's a good solution to a very well-defined problem. And if it warrants that kind of, you know, that kind of expenditure, how whoever pays for that, that's very, that's not unreasonable, not unreasonable at all. There were a few of us that were involved in the original 1011 development group. And I think that the housing mix is very good. You know, I would preface all of this by saying that we're here to get results. And that's really what we want to accomplish. You know, we want to get this developed, and we want to figure out how we're going to get this developed at the same time. So, the interpretation can only be that it's very productive, very, very productive stuff. I think a fence is a, not that a fence is, you know, we just did this a couple of weeks ago, but, you know, that's, well, that in fact works. And that in fact is, you know, it's a safety issue, and you have little kids. And, you know, things like that can happen, so.
I have a few comments.
I'm going to refer back to the townhomes. So, the townhomes up there and the streets, the 40-foot-wide streets or 45. I know the city has come to you and asked for wider streets. I mean, and I guess you look at it, and snow removal and emergency vehicles are probably the two biggest things. Is there a way to do, have you looked at possibly doing something different there, or?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up because I'd like to talk about that. So, originally, we were proposing private streets. So, most townhome developments that we do, the city kind of does the main street, and then there's private streets for all the little townhomes because everything's crammed together. You know, it's a lot more dense, and to do that, you got to have tighter street corridors, short driveways, that sort of thing. So, that was our original design. So, we had a 24-foot street, 25-foot driveways, or 20-foot driveways. And then we had some feedback from staff talking about the desire for a public street coming through because there's a policy that talks about if it looks like a street and acts like a street, it should be a street. So, we went back and looked at how can we create a public street corridor that fits within the parameters of a townhouse development like this without creating super-long driveways on each one of these units that are, you know, you'd have, you know, the driveways are only five feet apart. You know, so on the six-unit building, you'll have a 20-foot driveway, five feet, 20-foot driveway. So, it's a lot of driveway. And then if you add a wide right-of-way, the driveway goes from 20 feet long to 40 feet long. So, you end up with townhomes with really long driveways, which is going to double, you know, the amount of snow that's going to happen there that you have to shovel. So, it kind of compounds this problem. So, what we looked at is how do we get as close to our private street design as we can, but still having a public street that gives you adequate room for safety and snow and utilities and all those things? So, we came up with 40-foot right-of-way with 10-foot drainage and utility easements on each side, which results in a 60-foot corridor for all the public street and utilities to fit within. We would imagine that the city is going to plow that like any other street. And then the homeowners association is going to remove all the snow from the private driveways that are all packed together and the sidewalks in that area, and pile that in designated areas throughout the townhome development, kind of like it, you know, like it would normally do in a private development. So, we think what we came up with, again, is a good design that works, and it doesn't change the whole feel of the townhouse development into something with really long driveways, which is what we were trying to avoid. So, that's what we're proposing. Again, we'll look forward to keep working with staff on it.
Would there be a way?
That's where we came up with.
I'm just talking snow removal. Would there be a way that, just the whole association, I mean, they are streets or public streets, but just for convenience fact, would the association do all the snow removal?
Yeah. I mean, that's a great suggestion. I think that that's something that they could certainly, you know, be open to doing. If that's something that the city could do, allow a private association to plow the public street. I'm sure they, you know, would be happy to figure that out in the association.
I guess it's just whether it needs public.
Yeah.
They don't reduce your taxes for the cost of plowing.
Yeah, no, I know. But yeah, that's a great suggestion because if that's the biggest concern, you know, that's, we can solve that, you know, because that's what we would do in a private situation, anyway.
Marty had a comment.
Yeah, Chair, I just kind of want to jump in because it is a broader conversation, and we're planning to have this conversation with the council as well. Mr. Pavick is absolutely right. Our direction to them was if it looks like a street, it functions like a street versus a private drive. We want to see public streets, but there is some, you know, there's different factors that work within these townhome developments than there are that work within traditional single-family home areas. So, I think it just needs to be a broader discussion as to does the city want to support private streets? As I mentioned when we started the presentation, there's pros and cons to each, right? City's not responsible for maintaining the snow or doing any of the maintenance, but one of the cons being until they are, right? Until, you know, if you look long-term and if you have an HOA that can no longer afford to, because this is, it's a pretty large roadway network, right, that those homeowners would be responsible for financially keeping in place. So, those are the things that internally we weigh as staff and why we try to shy away from big, public, private roadway networks versus private drives. But I think that needs to just be a broader discussion, the private versus public in these instances as well.
How do you determine the mix of townhomes, villas, and single-family? Because when you look, and I realize you can't flip-flop these, to take all of these away from the train tracks, but the townhomes, the way they can kind of go perpendicular a little bit more actually could fit and be a little further away from railroad tracks. But how do you determine the mix of what you need to build?
Yes, if I could show you my file of the hundreds of layouts that we've done for this property. We do have ones where we have the townhomes up by the track. The biggest challenge there is the topography is just too hilly to support practical townhomes in that area because of the grade change. So, it just, it doesn't really work. But yeah, we have looked at that. And again, I'd be happy to show you or share with staff kind of those ideas. But at the end of the day, there's just too much relief. It'd be take too much grading, retaining walls to hold up the ends of those townhomes. They're slab on grades, and it just doesn't, it doesn't work as well. I think what we've got here is, after it all settles, this is the best design that we could come up with.
Can I go back to the streets at the, for the townhomes just quick? Is there adequate parking? I'm not totally sure how this all is drawn up. But if you think, okay, we've got two people that are living in this townhome, and then we have five friends that come over, is there any place to park in a 40-foot-wide public right-of-way, or is that not wide enough?
Yep. So, what we're showing there is, so each of these townhome units has a two-car garage. So, the homeowners would be in the two-car garage, and then they've got two guest spaces in the driveway that would fit. And then we're showing off-street parking, and you can kind of see it in the rendering there of a Yeah.
Okay.
A ratio of half space per unit. So, we've got about 50 off-street parking spaces there. Because we would have no parking in the street because it's only 24 feet.
Good. I guess that would be my biggest concern with a 40-foot-wide road is parking, which I tend to have a lot of concerns with all the time. Anyway, thank you.
If people don't put their cars in the garage.
Well.
And then the friends come to visit.
And then the husbands get more toys.
And then you got a Corvette. You need to park in the garage, and your car sits in the garage.
Just kidding.
And then just a quick question. Your purchase agreement is also for the triangle that's going to sit south of the railroad tracks?
We're just working right now on the portion to the north.
I have a few comments about roadways. Marty, is it possible to do an aerial that shows kind of a larger-scale area?
Yeah, I can pull up the map.
Okay. So, when we look at the parcels to the west, they're not going to have a whole lot of access off of Inklar. It's going to be limited. And so, if there needs to be alternate ways to move throughout these properties. So, this 70-foot right-of-way road that you've created, it's going to get traveled on a lot and by a lot of people. It's going to travel from, I mean, quite far west because there's nothing, I mean, this is going to kickstart additional growth to the west because you're going to be able to access Victoria Drive. And so, I'm just, I am a little bit concerned about the width of that. Is that going to support all this future growth that's going to be coming from the west? Because of limited access off of Inklar. So, it's something that we need to think through, and I think it's really important. And I'd be curious about a traffic study specific to that right-of-way. I don't know how elaborate of a traffic study needs to be done, but I think it's really going to be an issue. Now, the property immediately to the west, a lot of that is wetlands, so you're not going to have as many houses that are going to be built there. But, you know, the access point's going to go around. See where that round little piece is? It's kind of a funny little shape. That's how the road is going to travel around to continue going to the west. So, that access point's critical for everything to kind of move eastbound. So, that's one thing that I just, I was thinking about. Parking along the, I wish there was a little bit of parking outside of just the driveway and the garage. I am a little bit concerned about that. I wish there was like a little, few little shoulders that had some additional parking within. Not all throughout, but just little areas here and there.
Sorry, are you referring to the townhome area?
The townhome area, sorry.
Yeah, we do have, there is off-street parking spaces that are
That's the, that's the white squares?
Yeah. So, there's 50 of those within.
50 stalls? Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that. Okay. The other thing I was just looking at, there's a lot of green space. So, the row of 79 through 90 and then 91 through 96, goodness, I see where your arrow is. If you go down and to the left, this whole green space, all this, yep, all that, there's a lot of green space there. Is there any way that, you know, a park could be in that general area?
Yes. So, the shape of it is a little narrow, we thought, maybe for a park. There's also some floodplain. The reason it's so big and green is there is floodplain mitigation area that we have to put somewhere. So, you know, it could be there. It could be where we're showing our park now. But the short answer to your question is yes, we could look into that if that's a more desirable park spot.
I mean, I don't know if we need more soccer fields or something, but something as simple as that, I mean, could be, if it's a need in our community, that could be a nice location. However, would that set parking would not be met, so scratch that. But, anyway.
I think, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to jump into your question, Commissioner Moore. Chair members of the commission related to the roadway showing to stub to the west. This is designed as a collector roadway, so the 70-foot right-of-way is what the city's standard collector roadway is. And as you can see from the development, it is, we do not allow unless there are are anticipated fewer trips per day, any driveway access off of those collector roadways. And in anticipation that this will likely in the future be a pretty heavily used corridor, we had, um, suggested to the developer that there should not be any driveway access. And that's why you're seeing this, um, designed as it is now without homes along that roadway. So, um, uh, engineering staff, I believe, is relatively comfortable that this type of collector roadway would be able to accommodate the projected trips, um, east and west. And it is the reason why this is a, a little bit bigger than our typical 60-foot city street.
What is the width of County Road 18?
Do you know, Isaac?
Cause, I mean, that road gets traveled so much to continue going over to Bavaria and it's another way people travel east-west, right? With, with avoiding five for a bit.
Turn lanes.
But I see, but I see this road kinda becoming similar to that.
It is like, it's likely wider because it is a county road versus a, a city street. Um, but I do, I do not know the exact dimensions on it.
Mr. Pavitt, did, in your design of the townhomes, one of the things that I'm looking at is kind of how you have the parking, you know, 12 homes away from some of the homes. And then the smaller road, did you look at the possibility of, I know it's easier to build one parking place than two smaller and divide them, but I just know how people act. And people act in a way that they wanna be as close to their house as they can. And so they're gonna park in the street. Um, because if I'm in number 45 and the, you know, I have across the way, but if I'm in number 94, I gotta go all the way down by the cul-de-sac to find parking. And I'm not gonna do that. I mean, I'm gonna park in front, I'm gonna say, oh, I'm only gonna be 10 minutes. I'm gonna park in front of my house or in front of somebody's car. And so, I'm wondering if there's a way to look at where you have your parking and maybe just think about each, you know, building and how can we serve each building in a way that they're having some access parking? So, you don't have that problem if you're gonna have a narrower roadway, because it will be a problem. It's a problem in a, you know, single-family lot when you have multiple people come over.
Sure, yes, we can definitely take a closer look at that.
Okay. I, I would suggest that. I think it would make it easier on the people that live there over time.
And was that in your proposal that the, uh, that the townhouse section would be an HOA?
Yes.
Yep.
It, it appears that the townhomes are a little bit smaller than some of the other townhomes that have been recently approved. Are, are you thinking the demographic is, you know, empty nesters mostly?
Uh, yeah, it could be, you know, it could be first-time homebuyers too. It's, it's a real similar product, um, to the Whispering Hills MI Homes Townhome, the three-story townhome that you see over there. It's that size.
And, and that is, is what you're proposing here is very similar to Whispering Hills?
Yes, that's what these sizes are representing. We're not, you know, we don't have the builder lined up yet, but that's what this represents, is something like that.
Emergency access, is there a easy place for that to go?
Uh, Commissioner Pedersen, Chair members of the commission, as I, as I somewhat alluded to, a second access into this, uh, development is a, is a big challenge with the, uh, conditions of the, the creek, the railroad tracks, um, the, uh, the wetlands to the north. So, it, it is something that, that we've noted. Um, and I, I don't know, I don't have a good answer for how we are going to, um, feel comfortable with that. But, um, as I indicated, we want to continue to work with the developers and work with our fire chief to try and figure out if there are different, um, maybe creative solutions to, um, try to help with that. Uh, it is envisioned that that roadway would eventually connect and provide additional access. Um, so it would not be a permanent solution, but it's hard to predict how long that would be until that roadway, um, it connects to 10 or somewhere else on the west side. So, um, I, I don't have a good answer to that today.
Thank you.
It's connecting to the development to the north though, right?
It is. That's the one access in, is the development to the north.
Oh, is that their southern access? Okay.
Yes, that's, this is the southern access to the Rolling Hills development. And so
Is that the one that you could only go, you can only turn right in?
This is the full access.
So, this is the only full access for both of these?
Correct. This is the full access and then the right-in, right-out is, uh, the access to the north of the Rolling Hills, which you can't see on this drawing. But you can see with the, with the wetlands and with the creek and with the railroad tracks providing that second access is, does provide some challenges, create some challenges.
So, uh, based on the discussions, based on the feedback that we've had, is it, is it your, uh, proposal to have roughly, uh, 5.5 park by the, um, uh, by the single-family homes and then another, uh, roughly five by the townhomes?
Uh.
Did, is that, is that your interpretation of what had transpired?
Um, no. Um, I think what I was explaining was that the Rolling Hills
Rolling Hills.
Is 5.5, which is adjacent to our townhome. I'm just talking about proximity to park access. But we're proposing on our site, 2.5 acres of active park and then another acre and a half of trail corridor. And then we also have this wooded area that's an acre that we were suggesting to be some kind of a passive park. That may or may not be desired by the city, so.
And, uh, Chair, um, Commissioners, so yes, that, you can see on the, the, the screen here, this brown area obviously extends farther to the north, but this is the park, uh, for the Rolling Hills development. And then the, the two-and-a-half acre proposed park in this area. The Parks and Rec Committee did, uh, recommend a additional or a total of four to five acres in this development. So, that was their recommendation. And then I also mentioned the recommendation that this passive park maybe is not necessarily something the Parks Department wants to have and would maybe be better served as an HOA lot. But they, their recommendation was for four to five acres in this development in addition to the five acres in Rolling Hills.
And, and the, so the, uh, the distance from the townhomes to the Rolling Hills park is roughly how far?
Uh, the townhomes are right across the street. So, the townhome area, if you were to the far west of the townhome area, Matt, do you know about what that distance is?
I would guess quarter mile.
Okay. And then you had noted from the far west of your entire development.
Far southwest, all the way down there, it's about a half a mile.
So, the other, um, the other discussion item is the, is the railroad tracks. And, based on the feedback, based on the conversation, um, what's your thoughts in terms of, uh, the, an effective barrier, basically?
Well, what we're proposing is the berm with the landscaping. So, that was kind of our first best idea. Um, the only other effective barrier would potentially be a fence, like a chain-link fence, which may or may not, you know, it'll stop a toddler, but it's not gonna stop a teenager. You know, so there's pluses and minuses to that. We'd be, what I'd love to hear is kinda feedback on people's opinions on that because, um, you know, we could have an idea or you could have a different idea. Um, so that, that would be the only other idea that I can think of beyond what we're already showing, which is a big visual and, you know, a natural barrier. Um, and then just a fence would be the other, the other option I can think of.
Appearance becomes all-important. Um, chain-link is probably not, not something that, um, but, but it's, it's an issue that has to be
If it's hidden behind the berm, right? Then, yeah, it's the toddlers, you know, the teenagers are gonna do whatever they're gonna do. Now, you can build a fence high enough. Um, but just, it seems like trying to keep the innocent, uh, just away from the railroad tracks. You could have, you had a fence behind the berm or something, wouldn't that be sheltered? The residents wouldn't see it. You could be chain-link. It doesn't have to be, you know, anything fancy.
It's really hard for me to comment too much on the fencing because I don't know where the park is gonna end up being. Cause in my mind, I, 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 I don't see how that park's gonna stay there. If for some reason it, it stays there, um, there has to be fencing there. Uh, that's, that's a no-brainer, that section there.
Would you contemplate the berm extending
To the park?
Into the rectangle of park, almost into the, the wetland area?
Yeah, we could do that. Yep. Right now, we were kinda stopping it once the houses started to peel away. Um, and we wanted to give the park kinda some more flat space, but we could extend the berm if that's, if that's a better idea.
Did you mention that currently you're thinking four to five spaces for parking at the park? That's the two-and-a-half acres park. Did the Park and Rec Board recommend any additional parking there? It's a pretty large property area and I just could imagine you could have a parking issue there as well.
Yeah, they recommended a parking lot on the park property. Um, our idea there was, you know, um, not to spend park land by putting a parking lot in it, but to create a more appealing place to park on the street, whether it be five spots or 10. I mean, we could expand that a little bit. Um, or maybe we take out a lot and, you know, create a, a couple of spots like that. But we didn't expect there to be 20 cars parked at a small park like this. Um, but again, we're not park experts necessarily, so, um, yeah, the feedback they gave us was
Yeah, more parking. And I think if Vogel Drive ends up being very, very busy with this only access point, it's unlikely that the townhome people are gonna cross the busy street or be inclined to go that way. So, it might make more sense for them to come to this one gathering spot. I just, I would just look at parking overall, just knowing that it's a large development.
Marty, is the city gonna put a stoplight on this? Since this is, since this exit is the only way you can turn left and go north, and you've got two, you know, good-sized developments. Is the city putting a, a stoplight here?
Uh, well, it would, it would be, uh, the county that would actually be responsible if there was a, a stoplight there. I don't know that the, um, even with both developments, that is, it is expected to meet the warrants of a stoplight at this point in time. But that's not to say if development, uh, continues to the west and this sees, um, even more increased traffic, it could potentially, um, meet warrants for additional, um, intersection.
The reason that the other entrance into Rolling Hills can't be a dual entrance?
Uh, that's also related to the, um, Carver County, um, study, the 10 and 11, um, corridor study that they conducted and their, um, typical spacing and trying, uh, access management and not having multiple accesses too close. So, they actually have, and I don't know, maybe Isaac, you're a little more familiar with what those distances are, but they, uh, they do have a standard for you need to have X amount between full axes, access, but you can have, uh, limited access in between. Do you have, do you, do you know what those are off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, but, um, Commissioner Shorty, members of the commission, I believe this location was selected for the full access because of a number of, I wanna say it has significantly better site distance, uh, going north and south as well, rather than the right-in, right-out to the north. Um, and then it would just overall mesh better, but, um, certainly check with Tara on that.
Very good. Uh, does anyone else have anything for Mr. Pavitt?
I have one question. Side yard setbacks at seven and a half feet. Um, we like to see 10. We've approved seven and a half a few different times with a good explanation as to why. I'm curious what you guys are doing with those seven and a half yard, or seven and a half foot side yard setbacks from an engineering standpoint to guarantee we don't have marshland between each house.
Sure. Great question. Um, so, seven and a half foot side setbacks gives you 15 feet between houses. So, uh, a swale is typically eight feet wide, four feet wide if you wanna have a narrow swale between homes. Um, so there's really plenty of adequate space and that space, I think where you have five-foot side yard setbacks, it starts to get a lot tighter. And we've seen more drainage challenges, especially with real long units. Um, but on, on these, um, many of them are walkouts, so, so the drainage isn't, isn't a concern. But we've just, we just feel that seven, you know, 15 feet between is, is plenty of room. Uh, there'll be a 10-foot drainage and utility easement, five on each side as well, uh, to help grade that in there.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, we, we just, from an engineering standpoint, I don't see that as a, as a concern.
Okay. I mean, grading's good, but if there's other things you can do in some of the more challenging areas, that's been deemed something that we give the thumbs up to, whether it's, um, some sort of drain tile or other tool that's put in place to help. I know a lot of people that live in neighborhoods where the houses are too close together. I might live in one myself and there's no sun, the soil erodes and you can't grow anything there. You try to get in the backyard and you have clay ruts that end up being two feet deep and nothing ever dries out down there or on the sides of the house. It's a concern that we've had many different times with many different developments. I just wanna make sure it's being addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Does anyone have anything else?
Chair, if I could just ask one, uh, question as well. Um, are, are there any strong feelings one way or another on private roadways versus narrower public roadways in the, the townhome, um, property? Again, I think like I, like I mentioned, we, we, we're looking to get feedback on that too from, um, this group as well as the council. But, so I'd be interested to hear if there's any thoughts or opinions on, on those.
I think the thought would be is that I share your, uh, position on the preference of having it be city-owned. So, public roadways versus private. And I'll just share my own personal experience. And Christian can attest to it. Our subdivision started out as a private roads and we wound up as a homeowners' association deeding the streets back to the city and then handing over our reserves from the association for what we had set aside for future street maintenance. So, the, uh, it just takes a, a long-term planning and burden off of the homeowners' association. It puts it on the city, which, you know, at this point, we, uh, if my past experiences any guide, we've done a pretty good job of getting the street maintenance funds established and set up and, you know, um, seal coating and getting that on a schedule. This delivers a more consistent product for residents being owned by the city.
I would second that. I mean, I, I would say that the city should have the streets. Just because and it's just easier and I would, um, even plowing them or whatever, because if they, if you leave it up to the association, they might hire somebody that comes in at 10 o'clock in, in the morning and that's the only time they come in versus it snows all day or whatever. So, I would, I would second. I mean, I would think that they should be public streets. The city should own the streets.
I, I would agree. My only concern I have is, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but a lot of the city trucks are bigger. And, um, so that's gonna impact width of roads. You know, we have, we have sidewalks, or excuse me, streets in our neighborhood that have really busted up curbs and it's, I mean, it, it's in difficult areas to plow and it happens. It's gonna happen. So, let's think about that in advance.
Mailboxes have gone down from the trucks in locations where the streets are much wider than this. So, I would say if the city is gonna maintain the streets, it looks like you have green space. It looks like you might be able to spread out a little bit and I might think about that. I don't know that Victoria has 110 townhomes anywhere in a neighborhood yet. And this is gonna set some precedence for these other areas where people wanna have more density in their development. and this is gonna set some precedence for these other areas where people want to have more density in their development. And I think we need to really mindfully plan for the fact that, you know, we, we need to make sure that these people are safe, especially, I mean, three stories, there's likely not older adults, but that you want to make sure that people are having safe streets regardless, and that we're taking care of the snow. So I, I'd be on the same side as both Mr. K and Mr. Vansky, is that we definitely want to look at that.
What are the streets in Whispering Hills, you know?
Uh, they are, uh, I believe, a narrower public right-of-way. They are not as narrow as 40 feet. Can you pull that up? Whispering Hills is up, uh, off of five. Isaac should be able to do a quick measurement on those, um, over to the.
While you're looking, I would say public streets as well. I guess I'd like to see them at 60, like the other residential areas.
I'm typically a proponent of public city-owned and maintained streets. We have a little private road in my HOA that is a little bit of a thorn in our side. I will tell you that the city will have an issue with the road to the top for the city truck to be able to turn around in that one street. They, they won't be able to make a turnaround there. So you'd have to do some kind of cul-de-sac or something there to make that plowable for them.
Uh, Whispering Hills is a 50-foot public right-of-way, and there are some snowplowing challenges in that area with the 50-foot right-of-way.
The city does own some pickup trucks though, too, right?
Yeah.
To come back to the cul-de-sacs, I think, in some areas with the pickup.
Um, one of the things, just to kind of piggyback, and sorry, my, I was trying to think two ways in one, at one point in time, but to your point, Commissioner Shorting, um, so there, I, I think the city's, at least staff's initial preference is that there's potentially some combination of, um, public-private, so that you've got the main roadway system is public, but you might have a private driveway that extends out. This is, this, this, something that was done in the Lake Town 15th Edition, where the road itself is a public road, and then there is a private drive that has townhome units on each side. Um, and even in this layout, potentially that stub street there in a public scenario, maybe that's a private drive where there's the one building off of it. So that, just, just something else to consider as we continue these discussions, is there, there is some precedent to have public streets, but then have private drive stub extensions off of those that are maintained by the HOA.
To the extent that the HOA is plowing all the driveways, they have a plow in the area, so I, I can see that argument.
My own, my own experience in Madeline Creek is that the, um, you know, of course, it's a city street, but the finger streets are, are all HOA. And that combination, quite frankly, is very effective. Who does, who does a better job? You know, and, and I'm on the HOA board and have been for nine years, and the city does a much better job than, than our outside contractor. And, and I think that's, that's probably fairly common, so it's, um, the, um, you know, leaving it to, to an HOA or to a, um, an outside contractor, I, I would certainly not recommend at all. So I think it's unanimous that we all, we all agree on, on that at the same time, so. Anything else for this gentleman?
I know berms are always a big item for this group, and, you know, you've got, you've got berms all along Victoria Drive, which is nice. You've got the wetlands there, so that kind of creates a visual barrier. The types of trees, what type of trees do you envision?
It'd be a mix of, of evergreens and overstory trees. We haven't designed that yet, but, yeah, that, that's what we would typically do.
These wetlands, are they kind of existing as is today?
Uh, some are, some are farmed, so we're gonna be restoring the farmed ones into regular-looking wetlands as part of our restoration plan.
So there's some flexibility on how they're designed at this point?
The shape of them is not flexible, but, um, uh, because that, that's what's delineated out there. So we're, we're pretty well stuck with that shape.
Seeing, uh, seeing no other comments, we can conclude this portion of the, um, of the discussion.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We, we appreciate your thoughts and your, um, your plans on this at the same time, so, very good. Thank you again. We will be revisiting, I'm sure, in a, um, in the near future. Moving on to miscellaneous items on, on the agenda, I do have a miscellaneous item. And, uh, and what I want to do is to reinstate that initiative to schedule a member of the Planning Commission on a rotating basis to attend all city council, um, meetings in person. And, um, my, my, you know, when I originally came on to the Planning Commission, we had that before COVID shut down the, the entire world. And, and, and I think there's, the advantages that I see in this is, um, is continuity. Continuity with the, with the city council exposure, exposure with city council. I, I met, I met with the mayor, and we discussed, um, you know, them reviewing the Planning Commission meetings. And so to have, uh, you know, kind of, um, you know, direct, direct potential interaction, I think is key, I think is key just kind of to a, more of a team approach. Because we're, we're really all working on the same projects at the, at the same time. So any, any thoughts on that?
I, I think it's great. I think, um, we should assign them, and I think, um, I'm supportive of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I fully support him on that.
Hundred percent supportive.
Excellent. Excellent.
I watched most of them on, but I think an, an actual person attending will definitely help with continuity, so.
Yeah, I, you know, and, and, and I've, um, I would attend a lot of meetings, and, and I had some real, real positive feedback at the same time, so. I think it's a, you know, it's a nice, it's a nice team, nice team effort, so, um.
So is your thought just rotating? We just maybe start with alphabetical order, last name, and then just go down the list until we keep recycling?
And alternates, alternates, um, have the same, the same option. And then, and then, uh, and then in this portion of our meeting, then report on the meeting. And, um, and it can be, it can be brief, or it all depends probably on, on the issues that are, that are there. But do, do a report for the, for the other members here of the, um. So that's something that, that we could run a schedule, Marty?
Yes, Chair, members of the commission, it looks like you've got a, a majority of planning commissioners who think that this is a good idea, so we can certainly, um, put together a draft schedule for you all to review. I like the idea of just doing it alphabetically by last name and, and going that way, so I can get something on paper that I'll send out to folks, and you can cross-reference dates, and I'm sure we will have some conflicts and things where folks won't be able to do it, but we can, we can work through that, so.
Yeah, you know, and, and what we did before that worked out real well, that there was, there was actually three of us, and so we were, um, backup for someone else. So if you're not gonna be there, you know, give one of, or give, uh, one of three calls, one of two calls for, for a backup, so, very good. Thank you very much, yeah. I think it'll, um, I, I think, um, the, the council will appreciate it at the same time. Do you have any, do you have anything else, Marty?
Nothing on miscellaneous from staff, Chair.
I have something. Should we just change the setbacks to seven and a half feet on everything? Because it seems like everything we're seeing is a PUD.
Yeah.
Whether it needs to be or not, and seven and a half feet is the default. It seems that everything we're seeing is seven and a half feet.
Uh, Commissioner Shorting, Chair, members of the commission, I, I know, I know there is, um, some jest in that, but we are planning on bringing the zoning ordinance, the residential zoning ordinance as, for a review session. I think we tentatively have that scheduled in July of this year for this body to, um, talk about those types of things. Just based on the developments we're seeing, do we, do we need to make adjustments? Do we need to be firmer on what our standards are and, and talk about that?
Verify why things are a PUD? Because I thought there had to be usually a compelling reason for a PUD. It's like on this last one, is it the railroad tracks? Is it the topography? What, what, what is deciding that that's a PUD?
Certainly. And we, I believe it is July when I have that tentatively scheduled.
The other one that was, it's a PUD because they're gonna pay $500,000 to expand Coachia a little bit. That seemed to be why it was a PUD. I'm not quite sure why this one is.
I couldn't agree with you more, Terry. I mean, I, I think that is, um, the, the other, the other precedent that we don't, that we want to make sure that is not set is, um, is on parkland. And, and, you know, one of the, um, one of the issues that remains, from my standpoint, is on 78th Street, and it was never zoned for parkland, and therefore, um, there's, there's no, nothing that says that we have to have a parkland there. And the option of, of buying us off, so to speak, is, is not a precedent that we want to set. Do you, do you have some thoughts on that, Marty?
No, Chair, other than to just say that we do typically look to the comprehensive plan to make those determinations of where park should be or where it is, is acceptable to, um, have fee in lieu of land, but I agree with you. If the comprehensive plan indicates that park is desired and was planned for in an area, then it, it should be provided as parkland versus fee.
I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to ask it. Buildable versus usable, are those calculations used when determining the amount of park area? Because there's a lot of wetlands in this development.
Right. So the, the park calculation is actually calculated by number of units. So the actual area doesn't matter, it's the number of units. Um, and the calculation, if I can remember this off the top of my head, for every single-family unit, it is assumed three and a half people per unit, and for every townhome unit, it is two people per unit. And then we assume that every, you need one acre of parkland for every 75, um, residents. So you make, do the calculation to determine the number of residents, you divide that by 75, and that gives you your acreage for parkland dedication. And then in the instances where fee is paid or in combination of land and fee, the city's established an acre of parkland at $105,000. That's included in the, the annually adopted fee schedule.
We're getting $200 for the one we're gonna sell.
If we sell it there.
I think we have to keep in mind for trail connections, too, it's always a top-five issue with the, the citizen surveys. And especially with these areas, they seem like they're on an island. And if we can make sure that there's a, an acceptable plan for connecting those up, we should do that now versus trying to scramble and do it in 15 years. That's all.
And then Marty, quick question. On the fee in lieu of acreage, the, the setting of the 105 acres, that the city council, on the advice of staff in an annual fee review, do we look at what other areas are assessing? Do we bring that concept back to Planning Commission and say, um, you know, do, if we have any input on how much that is? I mean, if we feel that land and dedication to park space is where the city wants to direct its, its standards, then is there latitude to raise that to a, a level that drives the desired outcome, meaning more land versus, you know, just paying a fee and being done with it?
Certainly. Commissioner Vansky, members of the commission, it, it is a part of the city council's adopted fee schedule, so it is something that they review as part of that annually. I do not believe it has been changed in several years, so I don't know that there has been a really deep look at that amount, other than to make sure that it is in line, as you noted, with, um, market cities and in comparables that were not somewhere astronomic. But I think you bring up a valid point, that if it is something that we do want to further encourage land donation in certain areas versus fee, that should be considered when establishing what that fee is annually. But it typically, I do not believe, would come to this group. I think the Parks and Rec Committee would provide a recommendation on it if it were to be proposed to change.
Okay, and then what, what is the precedent? Is there anything that is by city ordinance or statute that the Park and Rec Committee makes that determination? Or is this something that's up for grabs? Is it something that we can put as an agenda item for the, where that gets determined?
No, I don't think there's anything that's set in stone. I mean, if it's something that this is, group is interested in discussing, I'm sure the council would be more than happy to receive feedback about it. So I don't think there's anything etched in stone that says you can't talk about it.
I have one more question. This group, so Golden Valley Development, they don't need anything from the roadway, right? They don't need any approvals to proceed, right? They're, they're autonomous, right?
Correct. Correct. Uh, they are working together closely, just because there is, uh, the roadway is intended to be shared between the property line. There's some overlap of the, um, proposed lift station site, as well as the, the well site then to their site. So they're working closely together. Their engineers are in communication, their development folks are in communication. And there, we've had several meetings with both parties, with both Rolling Hills and, and the, uh, Golden Valley separately. But no, there is, there is nothing that specifically ties them together.
Like, will they need a record easement or something like that? No.
They should not, no.
And we don't currently have development timelines from either one to know that ones, they're not gonna both be in full construction together.
No, it, it, just based on the process, since we have just approved preliminary plat of Rolling Hills, they're a few months ahead of the Golden Valley group. So just based on the timing of when we typically see those applications and things come through, I would say it's probably a good three months difference between where they're at in applications. Now, that's not to say, they might, they might catch up when you get to construction season and those sorts of things, but they are.
See that one road doing a ton of construction all at once.
The lift station and the wall, too, right? Lots of infrastructure that has to go in.
Yeah.
How long does annexation take?
Uh, we actually just submitted the annexation paperwork to the state for Rolling Hills yesterday. Yeah, what, today's Tuesday, right? Yesterday? So we received notification from the township that the reimbursement fee had been paid, so that was submitted to the state. They have to act within 30 days, although they've told us that they will likely be able to process that sooner.
Well, I think, um, I think this was a very productive evening for, quite frankly, for the city of Victoria. When, when, when I look at the input from the gentleman from the railroad, that he was very open, very frank, and, and, quite frankly, very honest. At the, at, at the same time, the developer, um, he said, what do we have to do to make this work? I think essentially, and, and so, um, that's, that's good that, that works that way. Does anyone have anything else?
I guess, I just, something popped in my head. How much railroad track goes down to 10 from here?
Let's pull up a map and...
I mean, just for future, I mean, what we're doing is not a lot.
Yeah, so, um, it looks like there are a couple of other parcels that would, uh, potentially, um, future develop that would be adjacent to, be adjacent to the railroad tracks. There's obviously the remainder of the welter piece, um, on the north side, as well as the, uh, this parcel here, although as you'll recall, this area is guided for commercial development versus residential. Um, and then north of the tracks, there are, um, it looks like two, although one of those is just a very small corner that is adjacent, um, to the tracks. So, oop.
And then once it gets widened, who knows how much left?
Right. And then, then you also get into, um, yeah, that when you get farther south of 10 and, and this area, um, for farther out future development.
We don't have an agreement with Dahlgren Township, right? We wouldn't be going that far.
We don't. Our, uh, our, uh, annexation area ends at the township border.
And that, that becomes Chaska or?
Uh, I believe Carver is south.
Carver.
So what we do now is still consider precedence down the road.
Potentially, because there are some, um, future residential, residentially-guided parcels along the railroad tracks.
Commissioner Kuhn, you brought up a good point earlier. You were asking about the railroad in Chaska on the, on the northeast quadrant, I think it was. Was it the northeast quadrant and what had been done? There's no houses there right now, right?
Clover Ridge is right there.
Oh, that one. I was thinking more to the west. Okay.
Have you ever lived near a railroad track? The other thing you didn't talk about was vibration. I did it in another life. And, uh, like figurines would like turn on the shelf just because of the vibration. But it was, it was a little bit of a busier track, and they would change cars, and that was always good in the middle of the night.
And we don't have this here, but the, another, where you have relatively tight radius on railroad tracks, then there's some pretty heavy-duty squealing that goes on while the trains are making those turns. And to have it going on at 11 o'clock at night, it'll get you out of bed.
The nice thing with this one is it is very straight.
Very straight.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, when, when I think of the railroad track, we have another home in a small town that's three blocks from a heavily-traveled corn and soybeans and ethanol, uh, line. And, um, you know, in the middle of the summer, if we have the windows open, you know, it's, it's very noisy. And, and of course, there's, you know, the whistle is going off at the same time. Um, so we then, we then purchased the home here in Victoria, and it was in, uh, it was in June, and it was the middle of the night. And my wife said, where's that train noise coming from? Well, it was all the way down on Bavaria, which is, you know, from like 78th Street down to Bavaria, quite a distance. And, and it was, it was plain as day. And so if you...
Wind going from the south, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so if, if you, if, if you're 145 feet, you know the rest of the story. And, and I think it's a, you know, I think it's an issue that, um, I don't know, I don't know what the solutions are. Um...
They build them and people buy them.
Yeah.
I thi- yeah, I think we're just back to the question of, you know, having a position on disclosure, that people know what they're getting into when they're plunking down their deposit.
I think we do have to be careful with that disclosure thing, because the first buyer knows, but the second one, do they know, or the third, or the seventh, or the... I, I think that we might, it's like a false sense of security that we ask the developer to do the disclosure, but then it doesn't carry with the house, because real estate agents typically are not likely to give you all the bad news when it's on the fourth sale. And it, and if it's not tracked in a way that's, you know, a signature is provided to the city, which is a pain, I'm sure, to administer, but then it's maybe not going to help.
And the county put it on your plat or something?
Well, the thing is also you get the fu- what the future of it is. I mean, today it's six trains, you know? It can go down, it can go up, you know?
Could be the bike trail you're looking for.
Well, I mean, that's what...
Connects everything.
That's what the, I mean, I...
I'm not looking.
I live up in Swiss Mountain, and the path that goes behind Post City Hall here...
You have the trail?
Used to be, I mean, railroad, I don't know if they still own it or not, but, uh...
They do.
Yeah. I mean, it's still railroad property, um, but it used to be railroad at one point.
That it could a bike trail? Could be a light rail. They wanted it to be.
Loose line could be.
There's a sign or something when you're on it.
Loose line can be also.
Yeah.
So I mean, they do, they do go back and forth, and usually if they pull the tracks, they aren't going to put them back in, but, um, but that's a whole thing that you just never know what's, what development brings. And, you know, if you do get, you know, industrial down there and requires a spur off of it, and now you got more trains coming down.
Full disclosure is going to be the key, isn't it? You know, on this?
Biggest issue, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first sales, it'll be, it'll be Marty and Dana who'll get the phone calls about it. Then subsequent sales, then, you know, they can say, you saw what the house was when you looked at it with the real estate agent. Now, now it's a little bit nebulous. Uh, I...
Some club you can't see. You should be able to see railroad tracks.
Yeah, you should know you're lying on a railroad track. That is, that's kind of...
It's just like what City of Chaska's doing.
And just to clarify, I'm sending those calls to Isaac.
I'm not...
Thank you, Isaac. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Um, just a comment about the disclosures that would usually be recorded within the development agreement. We do try to, or at least I try to relay those as much as possible when I'm speaking with, uh, especially real estate agents looking at homes. Um, it can be challenging to get that across on the fourth, fifth, um, sale of those, but we do attempt to get those across as much as possible, because they have a lot of good information on them.
This is planned for, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think we looked at a house in Carver, and there was no disclosure about the quarry. And if it wasn't for the fact that the quarry was operating, we would have bought, I mean, we liked the house, and then all of a sudden we heard this huge noise, and we're like, what's that?
Nice.
And then, obviously, if it wasn't operating, we might not have known it was there. So that's kind of the trick. Track can be a little trickier if the berm's covering it up in that nice tree line, right?
Can't see it.
Sure.
If it goes across the road, we'll see it there.
That would be helpful.
This is set up for a homeowners' association, correct?
Correct.
Is there a legally binding aspect to that, where the homeowners' association must disclose that information at every sale? I don't know for sure.
It's typically included in the, in the covenant documents for the HOA, which would be provided to purchasers.
They're supposed to, and I've always, all my homes, I always get that after I've closed.
Yeah. Most, most agents are. I haven't seen them often bring them before the closing.
Fair enough.
Many people don't read them.
Yeah, sell them red. Yeah.
I've read mine.
I need an architectural approval?
Seeing no other business, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a, a motion?
I move we adjourn our tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.